Isn't that a small tree hill?
I would like to call to order the special city council meeting. The time is now five thirty-two P M. City Clerk Duarte, will you please take role?
Councilmember Frometta is excused. Councilmember LaPent.
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Present.
Mayor Protem Alvarez.
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco.
Present. Approved closed session minutes, special meeting minutes of May third and May tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session minutes?
So moved.
And a second? Can we please take a vote?
The motion is approved with Councilmember Frometta excused.
Thank you. Before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. City Clerk Duarte, have we received any written correspondence on closed session items to be read into the record?
We have not, Mayor.
Members of the public wishing to address the council regarding closed session items may now come forward and form a line. Each speaker will have four minutes to address the council on items listed on the special meeting agenda. You may proceed forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Appointing a director for Parks and Recreation. A very, very important part of the program of the city of Downey. I cannot say how influential Parks and Recreation has been for kids of the city of Downey for years and years, thinking of the sports programs of Downey Junior Athletic Association, and the things that it teaches our kids about responsibility, teamwork, understanding what keeping score means, that there are winners and losers and everything in between, self-development. Even if you're not the most talented individual, you still have a part on a team. It gives individuals a chance to utilize their individual talents and work together within a group and be a functional member of society. It allows kids to have their own number on their own uniform, their name on their uniform. It develops relationships and friendships that if you ask anybody that went through this program thirty, forty years ago, they still have those same friendships that have endured today for forty, fifty years. It is one of the most effective, one of the most satisfying programs that this town has ever produced. It's just a situation where we want to keep some of these values going and we don't want them to stop the development of the kids, the understanding of rules. The best part for the kids, though, at the end of each sport, at the end of each day was, you know, maybe the parents worry about winning and losing more than the kids do, but was for the treats where they can get together after the game and they can get their own, you know, berry juice and Twinkie or go to the snack bar and get the hot dog deal, hot dog and a Coke for a dollar. It was always good and that develops the relationships and that's why it's important for the Director of Parks and Recreation to really give a good effort and understand and look at the big picture that that part of our city program is so important. It's so pivotal for kids to develop and as they grow up. And they understand that they're not victims, they're not oppressed. If they're not the best hitter on the team or they're not the fastest on the team, that doesn't mean you're oppressed. That doesn't mean you've been victimized. You know, get the bat in your hand, go stand up in the batter's box and take a swing, damn it. Take a swing, man. Try to hit the ball. Do the best you can. And that's why it's important, Parks and Recreation. It gives them and the adults an opportunity to get out and help and assist and work with other adults. And the kids get to see that and accept their responsibilities as parents. And the kids can accept their responsibilities by taking their turn in their lineup with their own number on their back and do the best that they can. Parks and Recreation, my hat's off to you. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers. You may come forward. Mr. Herman.
Madam Mayor, madam mayor, I believe in talent. I believe in public appointments. However, our Director of Parks has no name on this legal document, nor does it give us a biography of this person's ability and capacity to do the job as you heard the first speaker mention about talent. I believe, I believe children should have every right to go into the men's and the women's restroom when they play ball at parks and not be discriminated to decide whether is it an L B G T queer bathroom or is it an L G B T faggot bathroom? I want to know. The public should know. The public would like to know because some of us, I believe, like myself, love to go to parks and know that recreation is not just a part of life, it's a part of growing up. I believe. How about you, Ms. Lauren Langer, for the record? Do you believe in the decorum rules that the appointment of the Director of Parks and his bio should be posted here regarding his salary? Pardon me, ma'am?
Please direct your comments towards me.
Madam Pacheco, I'm directing it to the council. I'm directing it to the people on the floor during my four minutes of non-interruptive public comment because again you violate my First and Fifth Amendment along with the Fourteenth Amendment, my Article Section Two of the California Constitution, everybody. But there's only two people here and one service dog and I'm being deprived to continue regarding the enforcement of unconstitutional interruptions.
Stay on topic.
So Government Code Section five four nine five seven is the Brown Act. For those of you who do not know that, and during this Brown Act rules, we, the public, decide what we rule for, what we support for.
Mr. Herman, that is not on topic. The Brown Act is not on topic. Second warning.
I'm reading the public employee appointment Director of Parks and Recreation. Why can't you believe me, Madam Mayor? Why can't you believe? Is it that difficult for you to comprehend what I believe and have to force me to speak what you want me to say? That's called monitoring my free speech of how I'm trying to direct my mental health into this conversation so that you again would stop interrupting me, please?
Your mental health is also not on the agenda.
Yes, it is because I go to the parks and recs for treatments. I go there for therapy. I go there to play ball. I go there to shoot hoops. I go there to be a faggot. And there's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong of me going to a park and being a faggot. Some people might call me a homosexual, but it's called a faggot. Brandenburg versus Ohio, U S three ninety-five, four four four, nineteen sixty-nine. Sometimes I'm called a dirty nigger and that's not what I am when I go to the park. I'm a jock. I like to toss the ball. I like to swing my bat, although I do prefer to swing it in the restroom where no children can see me batting up because I'm a baller. Now, Madam Pacheco, the mayor, I know you're offended, but again, the reason why the FBI is in Anaheim is because Mayor Harry on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one called me a nigger.
Thank you. There you go for the record.
The city council is going to recess to close session of the city council under the following authorities. Government Code Section five four nine five, five four nine, five four nine five seven, Public Employee Appointment Director of Parks and Rec- Recreation. We will now recess to closed session.
We will now reconvene the special city council meeting. Madam City Attorney, do we have anything to report on the closed session action?
Yes, good evening. The city council recessed to closed session at 5:41 this evening to discuss the one item of business listed on the posted agenda under Government Code Section 54957, public employee appointment Director of Parks and Recreation. The four members of council present unanimously ratified the city manager's recommendation and selection of Jason Chacon as appointment from interim Public Works Director, or Director of Parks and Recreation to Director of Parks and Recreation. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Sidney Angelivas, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do. Madam Mayor, I'm really pleased and happy that Mr. Chacon has been elevated to the permanent position of Parks Director. Mr. Chacon graduated from Mazusa Pacific with a degree in kinesiology. He spent thirteen years in our neighboring city of Pico Rivera as a coordinator and supervisor, and was a director in the city of Rosemead for two years. And has been with the city of Downey for four years, and the last two as interim. He's done an amazing job, especially during the pandemic, making sure that our residents had access to activities during times when things were shut down, and being able to communicate and have classes, and whether they were virtually or not. But to be able to engage our local residents, being able to provide food distributions to our most vulnerable and seniors' delivery, and that was through the Parks and Rec Department. So can you please all join me in giving them a warm round of congratulations? That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Again, congratulations, Jason. We will... Special City Council meeting is now adjourned. The time is 6:34 PM. I would now like to call to order the regular city council meeting. City Clerk Duarte, will you please take role?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Frometa is excused. Councilmember LaPlante?
Present.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Present.
Mayor Protem Alvarez?
Present.
And Mayor Pacheco?
Present. I would now like to invite up Glenn Kravik from Calvary Chapel, pastor and Downey Police Chaplain, for the invocation.
This morning, I was reading in my
This morning, I was reading in my devotions. I don't mind, hopefully you don't mind because I'm going to read it anyway, even if you do mind. But it was, it says, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." And as leaders of our city, you need vision and direction. Isn't that true? And it's not always giving the people what they want, but giving them what they need. And with that, you need wisdom. And let's go to prayer. God bless you all. Father, I just want to thank you for who you are, that you guide us, you lead us. Lord, if we look to you, it says that you will lead us on paths of righteousness for your name's sake. And I pray that for every city council, the people that are in authority in our city, Lord God, the police officers, the firemen, Lord, each and every one of these people, Lord God, the young man that's a park and recreation, Lord God, that you bless him and allow him to minister to the people in this city. And I pray that you guide and lead our city council, that they would direct Downey in a way that is positive, Lord God, and Father, that we might shine in this state of California. We ask that in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you.
I would now like to invite up Monica Ortiz, Recreation Supervisor, for the flag salute.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you again for joining us. Now is the time for city council member announcements, requests for future agenda items, conference meeting reports. I'll start off with my far left with Councilmember Trujillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This is our opportunity to let you know what we've done since the last council meeting. First thing I want to report out is, at the city's expense, I did travel to Indian Wells for the Contract Cities Annual Conference. It's an opportunity for all member cities, and I believe out of the eighty-eight cities in the county, there are about seventy-five cities that belong to this organization. Even though we are what we call an independent city because we're very fortunate to have our own police department and fire department, we still contract out for services such as street sweeping, for example. So here at these conferences, not only are they educational, but you also get to meet the vendors. I learned a lot about Nationwide. They do our street sweeping. It's a family-owned business. And it's an incredible American success story. But thank you for allowing me to participate and represent you at this conference. SB nine was a hot topic of discussion for those of you who are not familiar with SB nine. Sacramento passed Senate Bill nine, which basically endangers single-family residential neighborhoods. Because with the need in housing, what California wants us to do now is basically subdivide our lots. So instead of having one home, we possibly have two homes. And that can change the character of our neighborhoods and impact them particularly around parking. So as cities, we're trying to figure out how we're going to deal with this change that's coming to us. We were able to get the funding to bring Mexico and El Corazon to the Downey Theater, the performance, which is absolutely free to all residents, is June first. It is a Wednesday, but we were fortunate to get the talent that's coming from Mexico for free. So we, our expenditure, what we approved was around $4,000 for the staff. I understand the tickets are basically gone. Working to free up some tickets, we had set aside some tickets for some nonprofits, and we're going to work to make those available. So please follow Downey Theater on our social media to get more information on those coming tickets. And we hope you could join us for Mexico en el Corazon, Wednesday, June first, at our beautiful theater. I had an opportunity to visit with our Bellflower neighbors on two occasions. One, I visited the Bellflower Behavioral Health Hospital. I find homelessness to probably be the number one issue facing our city today. We're trying to be proactive. We are already proactive on how do we, in a dignified manner, get these people off our streets. We're working on that. You have, I continue to promise that you will not see tents in the jurisdiction of this city. I'm simply, we're simply not having it. And I know that there's people who are going to tell you that we're violating people's rights. Well, my residents want me to look out for their rights, and we are not going to allow what we are seeing in other cities to happen in Downey. We will continue to offer services in a dignified manner to homeless individuals, but there is no reason why my twelve-year-old son should have to see people exposing themselves in the middle of our streets. So we will continue to work on those issues. And Bellflower, thanks again to the Community Family Guidance Center for providing services to our families centered around the issues of mental health. And congratulations to the Downey Conservancy. I had an opportunity to visit La Casa de Parley Johnson. And for those of you who don't know, I'm a big proponent about preserving the history of our great little city, which is Downey. And if you had not had a chance to visit this home, I want to work with the Conservancy to perhaps have an open house if they will allow that. It's just a beautiful home, and I hope that you, our Downey residents, and your families get to visit a part of Downey history. Point of personal privilege, special congratulations to Caitlin Alexandria Trujillo, better known as my daughter, for congratulating, for graduating from Cal State Long Beach with a degree in political science. She says she wants to be a lawyer like her dad or like her father. Good luck to her. And I am just very proud of you, Mihah. I love you. And to the residents in Downey whose families are seeing graduations, congratulations to you and your families for continuing to achieve academic success. I absolutely believe education is the great equalizer, and please take advantage of the education opportunities that this great country continues to provide to us. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Councilmember LaPlante.
Staff over there will get mad at me if I don't turn on the microphone. Scott is giving me the good. A number of people have commented over the last few months regarding AB 1910 from Christina Garcia regarding repurposing golf courses. I would note that that bill was held in the Assembly Appropriations Committee, so effectively it is dead for this section of the legislature. On behalf of the city, I attended the Warren High School Avid Dinner, the Gangs Out of Downey Dinner, and attended the dedication of the new Kaiser Tower. And I would comment on our items that we have on the public hearings. The legislature may have had a good idea of having documentation or requiring the cities to produce, you know, information on military police equipment. Look in our agenda at what our police department had to do to comply with that law. It's page after page of detail upon detail that provides nothing. I can only imagine what cities the size of Long Beach or Los Angeles had to produce. I really wish the legislature at times would think through what the ramifications are of some of the actions they take and then put burdens on cities to have to do those kind of things. This whole report is unfortunately nothing more than a pile of paperwork to document things like rubber bullets. Thank you.
Thank you, and well said. Next up, we have Mayor Protem Alvarez.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here on this difficult night. My heart goes out tonight to the families in Texas. We hope to improve as a country so tragedies like this don't happen anymore. My heart goes out. Next, I wanted to report, I enjoy attending the California Contract Cities Association at Indian Wells. The meeting allowed us to learn more about how can we help our community. Also, I attended the opening of the Kaiser North Tower Open House here in our city. We are very excited for our city to continue its leadership in healthcare. And I'm happy to keep working for more for my city. Always remember that you can reach out to me if you need anything. And I wanted to congratulate Jason Chacon again. Congrats on your new position. And that concludes my comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And to all of you, thank you for being here. Thank you for being engaged in your city and with your city council. That is very important for us, and we keep, it helps us to help you by you being engaged. I want to first start off with recognizing certain individuals. I do see we have Michael Calvert, who's the executive director of our Downey Chamber of Commerce. Thank you. Round of applause. And I see also Planning Commissioner Horacio Ortiz. He's in the audience.
Happy birthday, Horacio.
Happy birthday. So a couple of events that I attended, it's been a very, very busy month. I attended the Cal Cities City Leaders Summit, so I was unable to make it to the Contract Cities Annual Conference. I, unfortunately, I shouldn't say unfortunately, I fortunately was able to attend the Cal Cities Conference, which is hosted by the Mayor's and Council Department, which I'm the second VP of. And this is a conference that is, was scheduled to provide information, tips, tools for our local elected officials. Topics that we discussed is having a vibrant downtown. We don't have that problem here in the city of Downey. We have a very vibrant downtown area. But if you go to other cities, due to the pandemic, their downtown isn't as vibrant. If you ever have an opportunity to visit cities like Sacramento, their downtown is pretty, pretty dead with a lot of businesses that have unfortunately closed due to the pandemic. But we have been very fortunate in our city. But that's one of the topics that we discussed, along with how to engage with residents, how to keep them engaged, how to keep them informed as to various legislative bills and affordable housing. So we touched upon various different topics during this conference. So hopefully, my council colleagues can attend the summit next year, which we will be placing on the website. But that date hasn't been yet determined. The location hasn't yet been determined, but this event will be held again next year. Also, on May sixteenth, I had the pleasure of visiting Warren High School. Yes, I attended Downey High, but I have nothing but love for both of the high schools, in fact, all of the high schools here in our city. I had the pleasure of speaking to the barristers, which are our future lawyers. And I discussed my pathway of being an attorney and serving as mayor and council member here in the sound, in the city of Downey. So it was, it was a very pleasant experience. I was able to answer the questions from the youth, which is something that I always love doing. And actually, I was given this bracelet that I've been wearing for the last two weeks because it's, it has inspirational words on it. It has encourage, educate, empower, which is what we should be doing with our youth, with our youth. We should be encouraging them to do their best, best, educating them and empowering them with the tools to be successful adults. So this, these are the kind of events that I love attending. These are the kind of things I love doing for our community. It's just keeping our youth, our community engaged and just empowering them. I also had the pleasure of attending the Olive's ten-year anniversary, and I see Lupe here from the Olive. Let's give her a round of applause. The Olive on Gallatin and Lakewood just celebrated their ten-year anniversary, so I also had the pleasure of attending that. And then last week, we had our first Business Watch meeting, which is, was a topic that unfortunately is very timely. The topic was active shooter situations and what to do in an active shooter situation. Like I said, it's unfortunate that these are the times that we're living in, in which we have to prepare in case we are ever caught up in this situation. So please get involved with your neighborhood watch meetings. Please get involved with the Business Watch meetings. It's not just for business owners. It's for everyone. It's open to the public. We will be having another meeting coming up. We'll be posting on social media, and we're looking at having it again at 9:00 AM, and it will be here in the council chambers. Also, last Thursday, I attended the Children's Benefit Dinner from the Community Family Guidance Center. I also attended the Whole Child Raise the Roof Event, and I also attended the Gangs Out of Downey Gala, which is always a fun event. So I was running around a lot. And also on Saturday, had the opportunity of attending the Enrichment Expo and Wellness Fair over at Doty Middle School, where the kids had the pleasure of playing sports, playing with instruments, dance, arts. It was a fun day. It was a fun day for the entire family. And this was thanks to Downey Unified School District and the Downey Foundation for Educational Opportunities. It was a wonderful event. The kids were having a great time. I also attended the Kaiser Permanente Downey Medical Center North Tower Open House. And our city manager was there, along with Councilmember LaPlante and Mayor Protem Alvarez. And last night, I had the pleasure of swearing in the new board members for the ARC. So it was definitely a busy, busy, busy month. Upcoming events, we have the Downey Rose Float, who will be hosting a fundraiser, a murder mystery type of fundraiser. It will be at the Rose Float location. You can find more information on the Downey Rose Float Facebook page. We will also have a Memorial Day Ceremony on Monday at the Downey Cemetery. This will be at 10:00 AM. And last but not least, please come out, support our Downey Police and Fire Foundation Golf Tournament on June thirteenth. If you are a golfer, know a golfer, please follow us on our Facebook page, Downey Police and Fire Foundation. You can find more information, so that way you can sign up and join us at golf. So that will conclude my comments. Just want to thank you all again for being here today. We do have several presentations, so I will proceed down. So like I mentioned, we do have several presentations, and we'll try to make it brief, so that way we can get to the business. But the first proclamation is for Municipal Clerks Week. This is to recognize all the hard work that our city clerks do for us. I have a proclamation here for our clerk who I'll invite up. So our city clerk is responsible for a lot of things in the city of Downey. She's here at our council meetings. She's, she deals with elections, public records requests, so she's a really busy person. And so today, or this, this week is a week in which we celebrate and we honor her for everything that she does for her city, or for our city. So I have here a proclamation which reads, whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest amongst public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to the ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas a municipal clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government Community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And where it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Blanca Pacheco, Mayor of the city of Downey, do recognize Week of Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our city clerk, our amazing city clerk, Alicia Duarte, and Deputy City Clerk Linda Ty for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our city. Please give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council and our city manager for your continued support of the City Clerk's Office. The City Clerk's Office strives daily to provide the best customer service to our internal and external customers. And I also want to thank and acknowledge Deputy City Clerk Linda Ty for her hard work and dedication to the City Clerk's Office. Thank you.
For this special proclamation, I would like to invite up Monica Ortiz to assist. Let's give her a round of applause.
Good evening, Mayor Pacheco, members of the city council, members of the public. So each year, the city of Downey and the Parks and Recreation Department recognizes the outstanding efforts of our volunteers. We are happy to recognize a member of our volunteers that has dedicated years of service to the city of Downey. So I would like to recognize Millie Sanchez this evening as our Older American of the Year. Would you please come join me? Millie Sanchez was born on March 29th, 1949, in Havana, Cuba. She migrated to the U.S. in 1969. She began working for Bank of America in 1972 in the city of Downey, where she served in various positions through her employment. As a loan officer, managed front desk operations, and also served as a customer service representative. After 34 years of service with Bank of America, she retired and began her volunteer efforts serving her community. She volunteered at the city of Paramount Senior Center and also for the city of Downey's Barbara J. Riley Community and Senior Center. In 2006, Millie began volunteering for the city of Downey's Senior Lunch Program and quickly became a consistent volunteer. She helps with checking in seniors for daily lunches, serves food, and assists with collecting intake forms on a daily basis. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, she continued to show her dedication to her community as she delivered frozen meals to two seniors who needed resources. She's a friendly, welcoming, and kind person who enjoys helping others. She has two children and two grandchildren, and her son also happens to be a Downey business owner. The Senior Lunch Program and the city of Downey are so grateful to have her serving this community. Congratulations, Millie, in being named the Older American of the Year.
So she will be presented with a lapel pin with the city emblem, and also a proclamation, and a nice award right here. So let's give her another round of applause. Next up, we have a special presentation by our Downey Youth Commission. May is known as being the Mental Health Awareness Month. It is a month in which we recognize that certain individuals are dealing with mental health issues. And we've seen that during the pandemic. So this is something that I'm going to hand over to our Downey youth to do this special presentation. So can I have you come up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council for this proclamation. On behalf of Downey Youth Commission, I'd like to say that mental health is a very important cause. And while May is Mental Health Awareness Month, mental health matters each and every day.
One in six U.S. youth aged 6 to 17 experience a mental health disorder each year. And 60% of youth that struggled with mental health illness did not get mental health treatment last year. The Youth Commission recently posted a video about Mental Health Awareness Month and how to access resources. This can be seen on our Instagram account and on the city's social media channels. Thank you again for recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month.
And don't go anywhere. Our Downey Youth Commissioners also did a special video. It could be seen on our social media pages, both the city's social media page and Downey Youth Commission's social media page. I've shared it on my social media page. So I just ask everyone to please share this important video and message regarding mental health awareness. I have here a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, which reads, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives. And whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental illnesses. And whereas there is substantial body of research that supports specific tools that all Americans can use to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being. And whereas mental illnesses are real and prevalent in our nation. And whereas with yearly and effective treatment, these individuals with mental illnesses can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas each business school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental illnesses is responsible for promoting mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Therefore, I, Mayor Blanca Pacheco, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Mental Health Month in the city of Downey. I also call upon all residents to commit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses. Let's give our Downey Youth Commissioners a big round of applause. Moving on to our next proclamation, we have in honor of National Police Week. Every week in the month of, well, I shouldn't say every week, but during the month of May, we recognize law enforcement and everything that they do on a daily basis. They work tirelessly, they put themselves in danger, and they put themselves in risk. And they do so to protect us, the community. And so we always should be thanking law enforcement and everything that they do for us. But we have a special week to commemorate everything they do for our communities. It's tough times that we're dealing with. Like I mentioned, we've been dealing with active shooter situations, and they're putting themselves at risk whenever these types of incidents do occur. So for this proclamation, I would like to invite up our chief, Leslie Murray, to present this proclamation.
No, thank you, Mayor Pacheco. We appreciate it very much. I'm very proud of the work that the men and women of the Downey Police Department do on a daily basis. You know, we continue to have issues that we deal with, and law enforcement is ever-changing. But the folks that we hire, you know, they continue to meet those challenges, and I'm very proud of them. So thank you for recognizing them this evening.
Can I have our members of law enforcement, please?
So in addition to the proclamation, every year, we bring our new officers to our city council meetings to introduce them to the community and to our council. And we haven't been able to do that in the past three years. And so I thought it was really important that we get back to that. And we initially had 15 officers that we invited to be here tonight, but we had a little bit of a schedule change, so we have some of them here tonight, but not all of them. But nonetheless, I'd like to recognize each one of them for their, I have so much gratitude for them coming into this profession in this day and age. You know, a few years ago, we started going through some difficulties and some different challenges, including the pandemic. And I thought, who's going to want to do this job anymore? But I was surprised. They kept coming, and we still hire the best of the best. And we didn't have to lower standards. We got good applicants. And I think just because they have true servant hearts, they just really wanted to do good. They wanted to help our community. So I'd like to introduce each one of them, and just bear with me, I'd like to introduce them to you and say a few words and have them come up. So as I call your name, please come up. Anthony Polito. So Anthony's one that's not so new anymore. He's already got a special assignment. He's been on a couple of years. So Anthony grew up in Baldwin Park, and he graduated from Sierra Vista High School in 2009. After high school, he went to Mount San Antonio College, where he earned his AA degree in Administration of Justice. And prior to working for Downey PD, Anthony was a police officer with the Rialto Police Department. But fortunately, we found him, and he lateraled over to us. He's currently one of the department's two accident investigators. So he works the evening shift, and his primary responsibility is the enforcement of traffic and the accident investigation. So he does a good job helping keep our streets safe and reducing traffic accidents in the city. And we couldn't be happier to have him on our department. Next, and hold your applause. We'll go through the introductions, and then we'll do applause at the end. Go ahead and stay right there. You're not getting out of here that quick. Next up, we have Officer Joe Bustos. So Joe's a local boy, or at least was. He couldn't stay away from Downey too long. He grew up in the city of Downey. He went to local schools. And then in high school, his family relocated to Irvine. He graduated from Northwood High School in 2006, and then he went on to Cal State Fullerton. And he earned his bachelor's degree in biology. But he's also a second-generation Downey police officer. He found his way back and got hired with us. His father retired back in 2008, his father, Joe Bustos Sr. So we're happy to have Joe with us as well. Next up, Jorge Valdivia. So Jorge grew up in Cudahy. He graduated from Elizabeth Learning Center in 2009. From there, Jorge went on to join the United States Marine Corps, and he served our country proudly from 2011 to 2015. We actually found Jorge. He got out of the military, ended up putting himself through Golden West Academy. But our, you know, very diligent recruitment team sought him out and found him there, and we were lucky that he applied and hired on with us. He's currently assigned to patrol. So congratulations to Jorge, and we're happy to have you as well. Next up, I have Officer Chase Falk. So Chase grew up a little further away. He's in Granada Hills. He graduated from Bishop Alame High School in 2015. He attended Cal State Northridge, where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And Chase just celebrated his first full year with the department, but he recently completed his field training program, and he's assigned to patrol. So welcome, Chase. Next up, Luis Hernandez. So Luis is another local boy. He grew up in Downey. He graduated from Warren High School in 2005. So Luis is also a lateral. He worked for the city of Riverside, I'm sorry. He was a deputy with Riverside County Sheriff's Department. He's been with the department just over six months, and he's currently working patrol, assigned to day shift. We're happy to have you, Luis. He's another one that couldn't stay away from Downey. He had to make it back here. Beatrice Flores. So Beatrice, again, she's a Downey native. She also graduated from Warren High School, and she graduated in 2017. So Beatrice started with the Downey Police Department as, how old were you, Beatrice, as an explorer? So 16 years old, she started as a police explorer. And then she went on to work as one of our contracted jailers for a while, make sure she knew what she was getting herself into. And then she finally decided to apply, and she achieved her goal of becoming a police officer. She went through the academy, and she's, gosh, it's been six months already? It's been six months already. So she's currently in our field training program and doing very well. We're happy to have you as an officer, Beatrice. Next up is Allison Pagnata. So Allison grew up in Canyon Country. She graduated from Canyon Country High School in 2007. And growing up, Allison was very active in gymnastics. She was a stunt gymnast in college. Allison previously worked for USC Department of Public Safety as a police safety officer there. So she was considered a lateral, too, and we were very happy that she decided to join us. She's currently in her field training program and getting ready to complete her FTO program as well. And then last but not least, Kevin Mondragon. So Kevin was born and raised in East LA, where he graduated from Woodrow Wilson High School in 2015. He then graduated Cal State LA and obtained his bachelor's degree in sociology. So Kevin also recently graduated from the Police Academy, and he's on field training and set to be off-training shortly as well. So let's give them all a big round of applause. I just want to say how grateful I am that you chose to apply with Downey Police Department. I'm so very proud. I'm so very proud of all of you. You each bring your unique strengths and experiences, and that's what really what makes this department what it is. You know, we continue to hire the best people, but there's no cookie cutter, you know, there's no cookie cutter for what makes a good police officer. It's the differences and the commitment to service that makes these folks an awesome team. So thank you very much for your service, and thank you to the families for being here tonight. I know you have several family members here. It takes a special family to support a law enforcement officer, and it shows a lot that you're here today to support your family members. So thank you for being here as well.
We will, we'll take a minute in case family members want to leave. But hopefully, our youth commissioners can stay. Why is everybody leaving? Can I have our youth commissioners, please, come up? Youth commissioners? I wanted to bring them up because I wanted to share the video that they prepared. So can we please share, if possible, the video that was prepared by our youth commissioners?
Hello, we're the Downey Youth Commission, and today, we wanted to talk with you about mental health. While May is Mental Health Awareness Month, it is important to remember that your mental health matters each and every day. One in six youth ages 6 to 17 in the U.S. experience mental health disorder each year. Additionally, 60% of that youth that struggle with mental health illness did not get mental health treatment last year.
We want to remind you that help is available, and you are never alone. If you need assistance, please contact a parent, teacher, school counselor, a friend, or visit your school's wellness center.
Additionally, in Los Angeles County, the Department of Mental Health provides various resources that are available to Downey residents. Here is Gary Vazquez from the Department of Mental Health, who works with our police department, that will provide you more information about what they do and resources.
Hi, my name's Gary Vazquez. I work for the Department of Mental Health in LA County. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. We work in partnership, I'm a clinician, and we work in partnership with the City of Downey Police Department. Our team name, our program name is the Southeast Region Mental Evaluation Team. We respond in a co-response model to crisis calls, and as well as crisis calls in the community, in the city of Downey and other neighboring cities as well. One of the things that we also do is refer those experiencing either crisis due to mental, due to mental health symptoms or concerns, or any type of treatment regarding mental health, or refer them to different, different resources. And one of the resources that we utilize is, is a number, it's an 800 number, and it's called the Access Center. It's an 800-854-7771 number. Typically, they're able to assist with referrals to local clinics or other relevant resources in order to connect people to the right services.
Together, we're working to remove the stigma surrounding mental health, and hoping that everyone affected by mental illness in our community gets the help that they need and deserve. Remember, you are not alone.
So let's give our youth commissioners a round of applause, along with Bonia, who works closely with them. Thank you. Next, I have a special recognition for an exceptional employee. It is Judy Montenegro. I'd like to invite her up. Judy? Judy has been with our city for 14 years, and I'm going to have our city manager say a couple of words about her. But I just wanted to start off with saying how much of a pleasure it's been working with you. You have done an exceptional job in our city, and we're going to miss you, but I'm not going to say goodbye, because I know we're still going to be in communication. I have here a challenge coin, City of Downey Challenge Coin, and I hope every time I see you and visit you in your office that you have this and you display it proudly, because you're always going to have a home here in our city, especially since you've made such a huge impact in our city. I am going to miss you tremendously, and the city is going to miss you tremendously. And we're really jealous of the city in which you're going to, but I know you're going to do an exceptional job. The council's going to love you, the community's going to love you. So just know how much you are appreciated.
I'd like to give a special thank you to Judy. One of the things about working in the city of Downey, it is really a family, it's our work family at the end of the day. And we all come together, especially when times are tough, and to celebrate things. Judy and I actually started roughly around the same time. She's been here 14 years, I've been here a little over 14 years. I've literally seen Judy grow up here, from working in the police department, neighborhood watch coordinator, to an administrative aide, to an analyst. She's really, really grown. I've seen her in that time, get married, have kids. She really did grow up in the city of Downey, and she did an amazing job here during that time. I will tell you, I'm fortunate to have worked with such a professional during my tenure here. She has grown from the young woman that she was graduating from college to where she is today. She's going to City of La Habra, she's going to do great things there. We're going to miss her. She was involved in so many things in the city. Not only is she the city's PIO, but she also did many of the volunteer programs that we oversaw, or she oversaw, our veterans program, our homeless outreach program. There are a number of things that she's done. She's prepared speeches for folks, she does our social media. So there's a whole array of services that she provides to the city. During COVID, she was just remarkable. She was out there making sure that the services that the community needed got done and got to the right place at the right time. So we're going to miss you, the city is going to miss you. You're a true professional at the end of the day. I will tell you that I am so proud of what you've done in your time here. Your family, I'm sure, is extremely proud of you as well. You're just an incredible person at the end of the day. So thank you so much, thank you for your service. Downey owes you a great debt, so thank you, Judy, appreciate it. Can I just say something? Have you no decency? Have you just an ounce of, did your parents show you, did your parents ever show you one thing? Just unbelievable, unbelievable that this woman is on her way out after 14 years, and this person has an ounce, doesn't have an ounce of decency, one ounce. I'm sure your parents would be very proud of you at this moment. Thank you.
Chief, can we have them scored it out, please?
Everyone, so this is probably one of the hardest speeches I'll have to make, so I wrote it down just to make sure I don't miss anything. So first of all, Mayor Pacheco and City Manager Gilbert Levas, thank you for your kind words. Tonight brings mixed emotions, as I gather words of gratitude and reverence for the past 14 years of my professional career in a place I have called my home away from home. But before I proceed, I also want to make sure to thank again Mayor Blanca Pacheco and the City Council for the opportunity to stand here tonight and for their support. I am not someone who enjoys a spotlight, certainly not in a way which brings attention to me, but I do relish this moment as my sincere gratitude to those who have made an impact on me during my time here in Downey. What a ride it's been. Along the way, I have met many wonderful people, too many to individually thank tonight, but please know that I am here, not on my own merit, but through the professional guidance, support, and collaborative efforts of each of you. To all of the former city council members I have the pleasure of working with, thank you for your commitment and ethical values, for your complete confidence in each of the Downey staff to do their job, and to know that the best interest were always with your residents. To the hard-working, dedicated, relentless Downey team, every one of you across each department, from the young recreation leader to the top executive staff, your daily commitment to serving this community is admired. It is no wonder why the city of Downey has been respected and valued. To the residents, business owners, and active members of this community, you are the reason why I came to work, to proudly and humbly serve you. Lastly, to Gilbert Levas, our city manager, thank you for your leadership, trust, and integrity. It is difficult, it is during difficult times where the light of exemplary leadership shines bright. It is much simpler to lead during moments of calm and steadiness, but to navigate us through the rough waters, and to do it with humility, morals, and class, and I emphasize "class," is something I will always appreciate. Thank you.
We will now proceed on to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing, military equipment inventory and proposed military equipment policy pursuant to AB 481. Introduce an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Downey adding Chapter 15 Military Equipment Policy to Article 2 Administration of the Downey Municipal Code. The hour having arrived, the public hearing is now open. The time is 7:32 PM. City Clerk Duarte, do you have proof of publication?
I do, Mayor.
Can I have a motion to receive and file the publication?
So moved.
Is there a second? Can we please take a vote?
The motion is approved with Councilmember Formetta accent.
Thank you. City Manager Levas, is there a staff report?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to hand this one off to our police chief, Leslie Murray.
Jim Eckert is going to be doing that presentation this evening.
The governor and state legislature enacted AB 481 in September of last year in order to require law enforcement agencies to obtain approval from their legislative bodies, in this case, the city council, of the, a policy that would be enacted or that would be used by the law enforcement agency in order to use, purchase, and acquire military equipment. Military equipment is something that is defined under state law pursuant to AB 481, which was a modification of the California Government Code. And so what's being presented to you tonight is, in fact, that policy. That would be policy, may, 706.1, which delineates out the, a couple of different things. One is, one of the things that it does delineate out is an inventory of military equipment that was acquired by the Downey Police Department prior to January 1 of 2022. What it also delineates out is the specific military equipment that has been obtained and/or that the police department believes it will be obtaining. As part of that, and that's delineated out in 706.4, it does have additional components to that inventory and to the list of military equipment that talks about the authorized use for that type of equipment, the expected lifespan of that equipment, and all of this is being presented to the city council for purposes of adoption. It's important to also note that this ordinance and the inventory and a report on how the military equipment was used in the preceding year will need to be resubmitted to the city council on an annual basis to allow for that oversight of the use of the military annual basis to allow for that oversight of the use of the military equipment. But that's basically what's being presented to you tonight, and I am available to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for my council colleagues? Councilmember Laplante?
Can somebody give me a vague idea about how much staff time this nonsense took?
A lot.
I'm sure it was, but I'd love to hear a real number so we can tell the state legislators exactly what they have caused. Anybody have a vague notion? 80 hours, 160, 320?
I didn't prepare the actual inventory, so I couldn't tell you.
So it was a pretty comprehensive inventory. So it took several members of our department's staff time. I couldn't tell you an exact number, but it was significant, along with our City Council. Mr. Jim Eckert.
And this is something, just to kind of go with what you're talking about, this is something that would be reviewed on an annual basis. And as part of that, the Police Department will need to hold a community meeting every year to allow the public to also comment on the ongoing inventory and use of the military equipment.
So I was actually going to ask about that. It has to be done on an annual basis. Is there a specific time every year that it needs to be done?
From the point of adoption of this current inventory. So what the Council's looking at today is the current policy or the proposed policy. It has been published on the Police Department's website since March 16 of this year. So it is required to be done at least 30 days prior to the Council considering it. It will be reviewed annually, so that would be from the date of adoption that we do here, or if there's going to be any additional changes to it. So if there's unforeseen equipment that the department wants to purchase, it would come back to the City Council for purposes of the purchase of that new equipment. And again, we're only talking about military equipment.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, thank you. I will now open this item for public comment. City Clerk Duarte, have you received any written correspondence to be read into the record?
We have not, Mayor.
Members of the public wishing to address the City Council regarding the public hearing item may now come forward to form a line. I remind speakers that for this item, you have three minutes to address the Council. Mr. Herman, you may proceed.
For the record, what were the actual hours of abuse to figure out the expenses forwarded to the taxpayers for more than one officer reviewing the so-called equipment of inventory? What was their overtime? This is the reason why... this is the reason why Anaheim's in trouble, because there's no oversight or transparency, hypothetically, in this point of view. And besides, why can't we use a consent decree in California to review why we're using assault weapons military in civilian neighborhoods like ours? Are all your family members criminals? Are all your children growing up to be thugs and need assault rifles like an AR or pepperball launchers, distraction devices, 40mm launching cup? What fucking shit is this? Bean bags, 37, 40 rounds, 30/20 title, 30/21 definition, and 30/22 policy are all fucked up. 42U.C. 1983, again, under the color of authority, COL 18 U.S.E. 242 and 245, we are being deprived our rights to engage in how we use assault military weapons in our community. Why? Why is that, Jim Eckert? Why can't you tell us? Why do you have to use assault rifles, Mr. Trujillo, to tackle down a person with mental health?
Mr. Herman.
Why do you have to, Mr. Donald, have to walk around with pepper spray to take down a homeless man who's looking for mental help from Gary Vasquez? The answer is clear. I just described the issues. A pile of paperwork, abuse of funds as of 01/2022, and we have no answers to the number of overtime paid out to an internal review of these inventory processes of military equipment that kill people if they're misused because inadequacies to train officers, whether new, old, or young, fat, and older, bald, to know that you cannot abuse the color of authority to injure, deprive the right of a citizen, and do profits alone to not have you murder them like that fucking asshole Alex Villanueva. Vote no. The sheriff and Downey, who the fuck shot the guy in the back of the... Downey Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. Herman. You may have a seat.
I want to just mention briefly that I do not yield my authority to any corrupt government. Moving on to the topic, I am asking for full transparency on all inventory and equipment. On every piece of taxpayer-funded property that is funded by the taxpayer, all of that must be transparent. The reason why I find myself having to say this out loud is because the council member of the Second District already said that this is tedious work to provide. Let it be clear, I am paying you to make sure that you guys provide me with full transparency and that you keep account of all our taxpayer-funded items. You don't get to get this job for the next few months and say that you don't want to do it or that you don't want to be as transparent because people are complaining. Remember, you're the employees and we're the ones paying you. That is it. Full transparency. And if you can't handle full transparency, well then you're going to have a tough time in this council chamber. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for the record, I don't work for you.
You work.
My opinion, this is much ado about nothing as far as this Assembly bill or whatever. City of Brea, I worked with close to police officers for 31 years, and I know... needn't remind you about some of the incidences like North Hollywood when the police officers were totally outgunned. I am staunch advocate of having our local police officers purchase military equipment. I'm just sorry for the painstaking record-keeping you have to go through because that doesn't make it any safer. Thank you.
Good evening. It's obvious District 2 has a point that if it's going to be burdensome paperwork and hours and hours and hours and annual reports and things, we're obviously going to have to get started to do the paperwork and to keep track of things. Transparency, I guess, is the word you want to use, but it also allows our council to make good decisions of whether we actually need to purchase this military-grade equipment. So we'll have to know all the information and the facts that come in, and we'll have to do it in a tedious detail. And we can do it within one year and then decide whether we want to purchase this military equipment or not. Thank you.
Hello. Today I want to begin with the quote of Thomas Jefferson. "The tri of liberty must refresh from the time to time with the blood of patriots and trans." There are any concerning messages of our current President Biden, as many knows about both proud issue. As always, we are suffering from inflation with increasing gas price. Even in our nation, America, why am I saying this here? There was an article, Biden administration is close to giving WHO power over every intimate aspect...
Sir, are you talking about the public hearing item?
Oh, it's public hearing item? Sorry. I'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Greenspan, boom, butt-kicking Florida Gators, usual. Hey, I live in North Hollywood. I used to go to that IHOP when it was still an IHOP, right there by the Bank of America. It just happened that that day, I happened to be officiating a basketball game in Pasadena, so I wasn't out there having breakfast and watching a shootout in front of me. But been there plenty of times. That bank is still around. Yes, they were outgunned. Yes, a gunshot bailed them out. And not the government, not the federal, not the state, but a gunshot that later got closed down for weapons violations, unfortunately, because they were the ones that saved a lot of police officers from getting killed and other people in the community. Now, this thing, I know it's the state, and of course, it's bureaucratic, and do you really want to put up with it? And how many labor hours? I would like to call it the $64,000 question, but it's probably going to come to more than $64,000. So... but it reminds me of something that years ago we had. Oh, I'd say over 40 years ago, during the Nixon days, revenue sharing. Oh, it was wonderful. I'm sure Downey probably went to grab its share of the pie of revenue sharing. There was just one problem. And some of these communities, one of them decided that the funds weren't worth it because they spent more time and money discussing what to do with the funds than actually getting it. And the city of, I think it was Baldwin, Florida, decided, hey, federal government, take your funds back. So here I'm seeing on a state level a parallel to the fiasco of the Nixon administration's revenue sharing. So if we can't get this done in a proper way without all the bureaucracy, be like that city of Baldwin and say, hey, take it back. I mean, I went to a Florida Gator game and what was there? Out there? Of military equipment outside the swamp. They didn't need it to stave off the Bruins or anything, but somehow, this was back in 2013, a nice piece of military equipment was in the hands of somebody with police either City of Gainesville or University of Florida Police. So I don't know how much paperwork and time they went through to get that one. If it's too much paperwork, it's not worth it. You'd be better off building the stuff yourself at a factory you have than to have to go through that paperwork. What's the old thing? No job is finished until the paperwork's done and the guy's sitting on the toilet. Well, that's about what that paperwork is worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other members of the public, I will now entertain a motion in a second to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. So ordered by the mayor. Unless there are any other comments from my council colleagues, I will now entertain a motion in a second to introduce the ordinance.
Second.
Is there a second? Can we please vote?
The motion is approved with Councilmember Prometa absent.
Thank you. I will now take public comment on agenda, non-agenda, and consent calendar items next. Before we begin the public comment period, I would like to remind members of the public that the city's meeting rules contained in the Downey Municipal Code prohibit any conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Copies of the meeting rules are located in the back of the chambers. The City Council acknowledges the right of the public to address issues that are within the city's jurisdiction and invites the public to do so during the City Council meeting. However, this right must be balanced with the need of the City Council to conduct the public business in a fair and efficient manner, free from disruption or disturbance. Members of the audience who wish to address the City Council during public comment are reminded that the city's meeting rules prohibit yelling, whistling, booing, screaming, and any other outbursts that disrupts or disturbs the meeting, any conduct that interferes with or disrupts persons who are addressing the City Council, any conduct that interferes with or disrupts council members while they are speaking, and any other conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or interferes with the orderly conduct of the meeting. Members of the audience violating the city's meeting rules after fair warnings shall be removed from the City Council chambers. I remind the audience that pursuant to Penal Code Section 403, it is a misdemeanor for any person to willfully disturb or break up a public meeting. Those violating Penal Code Section 403 may be cited accordingly. Unless modified by the mayor, each speaker shall have four minutes to address the council regarding agenda, non-agenda, and consent calendar items. Pursuant to the Downey Municipal Code, the public comment period is limited to 30 minutes. I remind speakers that your comments be addressed to me and not to any other council or staff member. City Clerk Duarte, have you received any written correspondence to be incorporated into the record?
We have not, Mayor.
Members of the public wishing to address the council may now come forward and form a line. Mr. Herman, you may proceed.
Yes. Regarding these decorum rules on record, the terms are vague and lack adequate standards or guidelines to rules of decorum. And I'm taking this as a direction from what you said, Mayor. It is towards intimidating us, the public, the plaintiffs, and the unlawful exercise of our constitutional rights. So this is on the record. Stop intimidating people with your stupid rules. Violations of the First, the Fifth, the Fourteenth Amendment, Article, Section 2 of the California Constitution regarding enforcement of unconstitutional rules of decorum. Stop being a bitch. So the issue here, ladies and gentlemen, is that the Working Family Scandal here in Downey, as you hear, started with Yolanda, the clerk. Now we have a sixth member of the genocide out of Downey, Judy Montenegro, as you heard tonight. Who's next? Who wants to be a part of the Anaheim scandal with Mr. Harry, Ms. Mayor, where all the mayors get together and discuss criminal enterprise? No comment, Mr. Herman. Please stay on topic. Okay. So now the question here, whether it's politically correct or not, I am 17. A resolution that Rick Rodriguez, Rick Rodriguez, the preacher, fucking dumb teacher of the Downey Clergy Council, wants to withdraw. Why? I told you before. I said it over and over. The Book of Romans, your Bible, Chapter 1, 26 through 27. God hates homosexuality. No offense, Trujillo, I never called you a homo. I referred to homosexuality and the fucking faggots that we all dislike. That is item 17 for the record, bitch. Then I go into the comment regarding why federal surpluses are being douches out of this city for the new final construction when we have lots of construction needed. Oh, let me go back to the betterment of Save America, as I heard earlier today. Let me talk like a political faggot, so that way I am politically correct and not abusive in my terminology as an uneducated motherfucker with the degree to save 42U.C. 1983, mommy politely. No assembly for you, mommy. No assembly. I'm sorry. As a candidate, pa fuera, because that's the only word you know. The only word you know, pa fuera. Alex Villanueva, vote no y pa fuera. Y los otros pendejos, for Mayor in LA, pa fuera. Not one fucking thing you've done for homelessness. Not one fucking thing you've done for people with mental health. I know because I called to check. I verify whether you have provided counseling, mental health assistance at 24 hours a day. Not one fucking call goes through. Not one fucking appointment because an EBT card doesn't buy a fucking goddamn computer to make an appointment. So, mommy, with all love, are you still in love with Christina Garcia? Because I want to know who the fuck called you a lesbo. I want to know for the record. Are you a lesbian? Say it on the record before I vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
These are for the record. I refer to my comments. Thank you. FBI's number there. Please sit on the back end for any further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
You've got to love the First Amendment.
I hope you wrote down those mental service information, Mr. Herman.
By your engaging other people to talk back, people won't be speaking back.
Thank you, Mr. Herman.
My name is Alan Helstensgaard. First and Second Chronicles are books written between 450 and 425 years before the birth of Jesus Christ, recording the history of Israel and Judah. They emphasize that Israel is blessed by God when it is obedient, but it is punished but it is punished by him when it is disobedient. Here is Second Chronicles 28:19. For the Lord brought Judah low because of Ahaz, king of Israel. For he had encouraged moral decline in Judah and had been continually unfaithful to the Lord. When members of this council decided to give $25,000 to the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender group to promote their festival, you were encouraging moral decline. It is shameful even to speak of what the disobedient do in secret. Jesus said, woe to you when all men speak well of you, for so did their fathers to the false prophets. Luke 6:26. It is better to follow God and be judged by the world than to follow the world and be judged by God. This is not hate speech. It is the truth of the Word of God. The Holy Bible is the book of God for all people of all of the earth.
I apologize for the language.
It's okay. I thought I was back at a Black Panther meeting, but anyway. The reason why I'm here today is, I have previously called, but my name is Rhonda Taylor. I have been a resident of Downey off and on for about 28 years now, and Downey has grown tremendously. But in that, I have become a senior citizen, and I'm also unfortunately handicapped. I live on Downey Avenue. There is a crosswalk there to be able to cross the street. But because there's so many people now here in Downey, Downey Avenue, it's difficult for me to get across the street. So my contention is, I would like to be able, for the council, to see maybe if we can have a flashing light, you know, like, so if I'm standing there, I can push the button, and maybe people could stop, even though I know they won't. Because everybody's in a rush to go nowhere fast. So, you know, I have stood there, and sometimes cars see me standing there with my walker, and they stop. And sometimes people just see and wave at me and blow, like, okay, lady. So I don't know if it's a black thing, if it's, I don't know what it is. Because this country is so crazy right now. But I live in the city of Downey, and like I said, I've lived here for many years. My mother was, my mother was an employee of the police department. My son was an awesome player, football player, for Downey High School. I respect this city. I have to live here. But I also am concerned about the security because on Downey Avenue, there are older people that live there also. And I'm concerned about, you know, us being able to move across the street. So that's why I'm here. I just want you guys to consider. Yes?
First and foremost, thank you so much for coming and asking what you need from us. So we're going to see to it that we do a, what we call a traffic survey.
Well, we'll have you, what we'll have you do is talk to Delfino so that way he can provide you with the information that he needs. And the council member, Trujillo, was saying, thank you for coming. And Michael Calvert, thank you for standing in line for her. That was very nice of you.
He knows I'm old and crippled.
Yeah. And make sure to get our email addresses. Anytime you have a request, any concerns, email us directly, ma'am, so you don't have to make the trip over here.
Oh, no, no problem.
But thank you for taking the time.
All of us will have our city manager say a couple words.
It's good to hear our residents come forward with these concerns. I appreciate it.
Okay, I appreciate y'all. Thank you so much. God bless. Take care.
Ma'am, gentlemen here on the side, our Public Works Director will go ahead and assist you with that. It's okay, sure.
Thank you. And again, we're sorry about the vulgar language.
Okay, an essential service. Helping that young lady with a crosswalk would be a very good idea. I want to address the council and continue to encourage everybody on the council to publicly come forward and endorse the recall of George Gascon. This guy has made a criminal's paradise out of California and everybody that supports him. Also, I don't want to belabor the point of the other night at the special meeting about the North American Institute for Mexican Advancement and the funding of it. I think, I think it's important, as with the military-grade material to get and the paperwork that goes with it, I think having a report ahead of time would have really helped the city council members that didn't know anything about what was going on in the funding for that activity. And it's not free. It's not free. It ended up costing us $3,831. However, I think the council people, specifically Council Number 2 and 3, who painfully, it was obvious, had no idea ahead of time of who was negotiating this $16,000 cost or who negotiated the reduction of it to $3,831. If you did know, then you need to come forward and say what you knew and when you knew it. If not, I think it was done a disservice to the residents of this city. This group is well-funded, well-funded, but they belong to the state of Jalisco. And the talent, as so to speak, are free. However, it was negotiated to give them $16,000. I assume it was to give them $16,000 worth of services. Maybe, maybe not. But I think if you didn't know ahead of time, it was disappointing to ask, why did you vote for it then? And you can think about that. It didn't look good, and I just wish it would have been a little more transparent than what it was, and we had more information, not just the council people who have to make these decisions. Because you can't just shovel it over to the city manager and say, why can't he just, you know, write a check for this stuff? Because it was a joint venture. So obviously, the city is involved with another private entity. And we just don't know who was negotiating back and forth and how we came to the final conclusion of $3,831. If you put that into the ticket prices that you should have printed, you would have had plenty of people or some demand that would have purchased those tickets. Because obviously, those tickets are not available now at zero cost to the residents of the city. However, if you would have settled on the $16,000 price, those tickets would have been $24. The theater holds 738 people. That would have been $24. If you settled on the $3,831, those ticket prices were $5.14. If these folks wanted to make some money, they could have. And there's nothing wrong with that. But we don't need to be funding or subsidizing anything from the Downey residents for these types of activities. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Good to see you guys. My name is Gabe Montoya, and I'm actually an EMT at Kaiser Downey Emergency Department. And I've been proudly serving the Downey community for 13 years as an EMT. I'm also a union steward for SEIU United Healthcare Workers West at the Downey facility and an executive board member for my union. We were meeting the other day as a steward council, and we were talking about, you know, what we've gone through in the pandemic here in Downey throughout our care for patients in the last two years. And we realized that we hadn't had a chance to thank Downey for their support of the healthcare workers that work down the street at Downey Kaiser. We wanted to thank the fire department for always partnering with us in the ER as their RAs and EMTs and paramedics bring in patients for us to care for. At one point, our COVID testing line at Kaiser Downey was seeing as much as 1,200 people in a day. So we thank the police department for helping us control traffic all the way down Bowflower and around our entire facility. As we look forward, as we hope to make our way out of this pandemic, and we talk about Mental Health Awareness Month, we want to bring light to the fact that healthcare workers have been working long hours, long days, caring for the communities at Kaiser Downey and the Downey city and the cities that surround Downey. And as we think about that, we look forward to furthering partnering with the city of Downey and you, Madam Mayor, and the rest of the council in making sure that we do what's best for our healthcare workers and continue to support them. But again, I want to thank the city. I want to thank our fire department and police department for continuing to support our healthcare workers that are serving the communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabe. And thank you for coming to our council meeting.
If I'd have known about this lawsuit over two years ago, I'd have been here then. Lee Squire, retired City Brey employee, auditor, fraud examiner, financial services manager, residential property taxpayer, victim and voter, taxpayer advocate, whistleblower. To the mayor and the city council, residential and business property taxpayers. Subject lawsuit of Signal Hill et al. versus Central Basin Municipal Water District, CBMWD. The cities who sued CBMWD included the city of Downey. CBMWD was sued for proposing fixed meter charges in violation of Proposition 218, other propositions also that amended the California Constitution. These illegal fixed meter charges would be included in residential parentheses voters and business property tax bills. Downey and other named cities do not get imported water from CBMWD. This proposed meter charge was blessed also by CBMWD's lawyers, OMLO. The judge decided in favor of Downey and these other plaintiff cities, but the cities were actually your property taxpayers, and these would have been illegal property taxes. To the city council, at what city council meeting was there a public hearing as this lawsuit impacted residential property taxpayers, also known as voters, and our business property taxpayers? Why wasn't the city of Downey the lead city versus the city of Signal Hill? Given the lawsuit against West Basin Municipal Water District as to illegal standby charges, why wasn't the lawsuit amended to address standby charges that was the subject of the West Basin Municipal Water District? Our property tax bills of Downey and other plaintiff cities are the taxpayers. Also want to note that also the same law firm, OMLO, was also West Basin's lawyer. That meant that both of these water districts each knew of the other's illegal property taxes. I tasked my letter is the court ruling for Signal Hill in favor of the plaintiff cities, and in my opinion, the property taxpayers, and the settlement agreement for West Basin Municipal Water District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Greenspan, and I'm back. Now, a couple things. It's Police Week. Well, one good thing, at least you didn't include Englander. Yes, a police officer, a fallen police officer. Boy, you should see his contribution list. I think it was over 500 pages from the various campaigns. And guess who has contributed each and every time to the maximum amount? That Rick Caruso guy who's going to clean up corruption in LA? Well, that's funny. You can't clean up corruption and donate to the dirtiest pig on the force in LA. Part-time pig, nothing to do with Downey. You don't have Englander here, but I'm going to give as much publicity to Englander during Police Week. Hey, what's a bribe? So he skipped your Association of Independent Cities meeting to go to Las Vegas. What was there? Bribe money from developers. In fact, those casino operators, not Englander, but Weezer, knew Weezer so well from shaking down developers, better than any of us out here. Now, why would that happen in Las Vegas? They would know these bribe takers. Oh, did Englander get anything other than money? Oh, yeah, he got an escort masseuse, according to the city, or according to the federal prosecutor. I was there. Mr. Herman was there. Mr. Spindler was there. Mr. Gus was there. Of course, Caruso wasn't there for his buddy, nor were the city council members there. And his wife was out there afterward, holding his hand while they were getting ready to take an Uber. And I hollered, looky there, his wife's holding his hand, the hand that rubbed his escort's pussy in Las Vegas. So now let's look at a couple other things. You talk about a vibrant downtown, as the mayor did. Well, Armando and I took a walk downtown, and he showed me those condos that are half-empty. Is the glass half-full or half-empty? Well, the condos are half-empty. They've been built. You see, that's part of the problem with our homeless issue. We're building great luxury housing, and we're forgetting the housing for the people that need it the most. So we've got a lot of luxury housing, and guess what? It's empty because not everybody can afford luxury housing. They're not scab lawyers making a ton of money like the lawyers up here. And welcome, Lauren Langer. Your family's deli is a nice one over there on Westlake, if that's the family. Otherwise, we sure don't miss Yvette, not at all. And I've been told today is Gilbert's last day, and I see there's going to be an interim city manager. And I'm going to actually quote from Englander when he said to Mr. Spindler, you'll be missed by nobody. Now, a couple of other things that, with Downey, you got the public golf course. I'm grateful we have public golf courses, even though Christina Garcia wants to get rid of them. But I don't play golf, and my family has tried and tried and tried to get me to play golf. And I had to take a PE course at Community College years ago, and I took golf, only because I had to take the course. And one of the things about golf courses, they're usually private clubs, no blacks, no Jews, you know, no yiddies, no shpatzes. So I'm grateful, because without public courses, people of color and Jews wouldn't have a place to play golf. I mean, Tebow talks about Jesus Christ. Well, guess what? If Jesus showed up at Timmaquana Country Club in Florida for Christmas dinner, Tebow would bodily toss him from the dining room. He sure couldn't play golf at the golf club. Now, let's compare it to another golf course in Florida, Trump's Mar-a-Lago. Yiddie, shpatzes, Madonna. Of course, you have to have 200,000. You know, chump change to you lawyers or Mr. Trujillo, who uses Downey's monopoly board. But after all, what's 200,000 to those who are well-off? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you all. If possible, I'd like to share this map during my comments, if that camera is available to show them. My name is Joaquin Beltran. I'm running for Congress in our district because family and community comes first. Mi nombre es Joaquin Beltran. Estoy corriendo para el congreso aquí en este distrito de nosotros porque la familia y la comunidad vienen primero. Mis papás vinieron de México. My parents came from Mexico. Con sueños de estar aquí y de prosperar. My parents came here with the hopes of the American dream, and they met here. They faced challenges. We started a business. We got uprooted. I dropped out of school because my mom got sick in order to help out. So I know the importance of investing in business and creating jobs. I help bring resources to the California State University system as well as the small business development centers. So I know the importance of investing in education, and again, investing in jobs and growing small businesses. And during the pandemic, I've worked to help communities be safer, to bring masks from the federal government that we received recently, rapid tests that we received recently, to increase ventilation and filtration in communities, in businesses, in schools. So we have a long-term strategy of how to keep our families and communities safe. Today, families, our community faces tremendous challenges with the cost of living, of food, of gas, of homes, of rent, COVID. This is a map from the CDC. There's two maps. One's community levels. One is community transmission. They added community levels. Just the few... transmission. They added community levels just a few months ago, and it looks green, right? It looks like everything is great. The truth is, that's based on hospitalizations, and it's actually getting worse as we speak. Here is community transmission. Okay? Here is community transmission. If you look at California, filled with red. The risk is high. We've lost in excess steps upwards of 1.3 million, 1.3 million, and we continue to lose people. Businesses continue to hurt. They're on the verge of closing down. People continue to lose their jobs, their homes, and we have to invest in our communities and our families. Today, a horrific mass shooting in Texas. This is becoming normal in the United States. It happened recently in Buffalo as well, a hate crime towards a black community. 10 people dead there in Texas today, 14 children, one teacher. We have enormous challenges, but we have hope in each other. We have to address them head-on. We can't ignore them. We can't be like this map and create a green map here, when the truth is that it's in red. We have to face the challenges head-on and take care of our families and our community. My campaign is grassroots. I'm not sending out mailers. I'm not trying to buy the election. I'm just supported by our community. So there's hope. We are the hope. But we have to work for it to address these big challenges that we have. So if you'd like to get involved, we're looking for volunteers. We're looking for any support, because this is a community-led effort, and we're going to create change, because the future demands it. Mine is Joaquin Beltran. Please visit joaquinbeltran.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll start again. Hello. Today, I want to begin with the quote of Thomas Jefferson. "The tree of liberty must be refreshed from time to time with the blood of Petrus and France." There are many concerning messages of our current president. I mean, even he mentions of all different issues right now in the United States. Biden, as many knows about both broad issues, as there was, we are suffering from inflation with increasing gas price, even in this nation, America. Why am I suffering this? Why am I saying here? There was articles Biden administration is close to giving WHO power over every intimate aspect of our life. Everyone knows that each disease and infection work differently based on environments and the community populations. But now USA tries to give up our national right to WHO. Even may knows what happens with this current effort of getting rid of individual rights, even for our own health, even changing the definition of vaccines. Originally, vaccine is to prevent infection completely. Even terrible disease, smallpox, was not developed anymore, is not developed anymore because of vaccines. But this terrible testing vaccine for COVID, I'll say again, testing vaccines demonstrate that it is not vaccines, because vaccine does not prevent COVID infections regardless of how many times you got. But still, in the name of COVID cases increasing, Los Angeles County, including California registrators, pushes this vaccine as mandatory vaccines to all, including our next generations in for young ages. Trump wants to change our DNA through these vaccines. As you know, this vaccine changed DNA sequence. Now, there's another infection brought up, new infection monkeypox. WHO official says monkeypox outbreaks is primarily spreading through sex among men, even CDC alarms for gays and bisexual men as a monkeypox spread. As I kept speaking of, speaking of LGBTQ is personal choice, not as the matter of being vulnerable or as the matter of being weak, because it's psychosocial choice, not as being vulnerable. But many politicians, including majority, majority of our city council members, including our current mayor, and including definitely President Biden's praise of being LGBTQ. Even now, Downey is going to have LGBTQ picnic as second years. It is definitely not a matter of celebrating or praising of it, even though all of you know that being LGBTQ is a factor to threaten mental health wealth. How can you put our tax to destroy our mental health with this LGBTQ picnics? What message do you want to give even to young children? Why do you want to deceive our children's, our community? To make it clear, this is not a time, this is not late. You still turn over your decisions for the community, for those who are young, still vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everybody. So I have some things I'd like to discuss. First up, I'm very happy that it seems like there's a lot of public awareness now that the city had liked to present itself as a place where essentially things were well-run, there was no corruption, there was no disagreement. All the council members were just like apparently outstanding. That was the myth. I'll call it the Levas, Downey Patriot myth. Levas and the council members would conspire with the Downey Patriot to, you know, give them tens of thousands of dollars every year to paint this fake portrait of the city, when there were people that would stand up against it, they would be dismissed. But now, I'm so happy, I'm so happy and thrilled, really, to see actually even the Downey Patriot acknowledged that the mayor should not be the representative on the state assembly. No, that shouldn't happen. Thank you. There's constituents writing letters that are opposed to the mayor. The mayor's run, there's articles being written. I actually don't support that concierge dude at all. However, you know, it's like, okay, like, where's the worst corruption? So, but I'm glad. I'm just so happy that now people are realizing the truth about you people, which is that you're, you know, like, corruption is a, is a small word for what's going on up there. So I'm glad that at least, you know, first it was like, oh, everything's perfect. Then it was just all centered about Ms. Alvarez. Then it's like, oh, Shan Ashton does some weird things. But now it's like the mayor and really everybody. So that's awesome that the people are becoming aware of that truth, you know? The fact is, the government doesn't represent us and is doing a lot of illegal activity, as well as just unethical. You know, there's a difference. So I was so happy. I'm sure that, you know, you're all wondering how you're going to escape from the evolving FBI probe. You know, a few weeks ago, we were talking here about the FBI was coming. Guess what? It did come. You guys were just laughing at us, huh? You were just laughing. The FBI is very close. And I'm so glad that they're going after the corrupt officials. We had the mayor of Anaheim, you know, resigning. We have this corruption proven inside the Democratic Party, and you people are obviously involved in it. The word on the street is that Ashton actually resigned partly so that he could testify against you people. So that's going to be very exciting if it's, you know, when it comes out. So I'm very excited for that. Good for Ashton if he does do that. And to any of the council members, it's time to snitch on, you know, everything that has happened here and has been hidden by Levas and the Downey Patriot. It's time to stand with the people with your oath of office and actually acknowledge the truth, become an informant to the FBI. That'll be a very good development for you. Okay, next up, of course, we saw, you know, Mr. Lee Squire, veteran. Again, Mr. Lee Squire is a veteran who doesn't just honor the flag, he honors the Constitution, unlike you people up there. So you people have been stealing from us, you've been stealing from the water resources, you've been charging things that you shouldn't have. Now you have this city attorney. You know, it was previously a conspiracy that this was going to happen, but guess what? She's an expert on marijuana. Oh, who was right, right? Oh, it was all of the, quote, gadflies. Of course, we're right. You're all corrupt, so we know exactly what's going to happen.
Thank you.
I want to start off today by saying that today is the new city attorney's first day. Today, when we had a presentation, certain people were clapping, and obviously, I had an oppositional view. I want to know why the city attorney allowed for others to make the same amount of decimal noise while I was isolated by the mayor and targeted, and asked to be removed from the chamber. That's a violation. That's discrimination, and the new city attorney did not give her opinion to stop a violation from occurring in her presence. It begins like this. It begins where every time that the city attorney fails to uphold the law here, we keep track of it, and we write it up too. So we are going to make sure that anyone who's violating the law and has an attorney license gets disbarred. We don't have a problem filing those paperwork easily. Pacheco and Trujillo apologize to a few people about the First Amendment. Sorry for their speech. Sorry because they have the First Amendment, because the Constitution protects them. Sorry that we have laws that protect the people. Keep apologizing for the things that inherently belong to the community, which you don't like. I also found it disgusting that you made light of mental health when you cracked a joke about Mr. Herman, asking him to get resources. Do you think it's okay to make jokes about mental health just because you don't like a person? Is that what we're seeing here from our representatives who are supposed to be a woke, represent our LGBTQ communities, but somehow don't understand the impact of making and minimizing mental health? You guys are disgusting.
Well, I think you should go get services along with him.
Shut up.
Counselor member Trujillo.
Shut up.
Let him speak.
Stop my time. Judy Montenegro is leaving. She's joining the other five, one elected and a few staff members that are now fleeing Downey. Why is she leaving if she's done so much great service here? Why are they all leaving in less than a month and a half? Why are they fleeing? That's a valid question that you should all be asking. During the clergy service, keep looking at the time, during the clergy council, Judy Montenegro saw Mayor Claudia Frometta weaponize the police against me. I have a public record document that says that Ms. Frometta asked the city police department to target me by name, and she was one of the people that worked, staff members that worked in that clergy. Now, she has an ethics clause, because you all passed that. If you see a violation of the law or people's rights, you're supposed to act on it and report it as a city employee. Judy Montenegro did not do that. In fact, not only did she observe it, but when I repeatedly told her month after month, "Stop abusing my rights, stop intimidating me, stop targeting me," she stood quiet and ignored it. There's even video footage about that, when Rick Rodriguez tried to beat me up in the clergy council. There's a video on that. And she was in there trying to console the assaulter. Isn't that crazy? I do want to say that last city council, we talked about the Kessler lawsuit that was dismissed without prejudice. The city attorney and the city mayor wanted to say that we've been absolved from dealing with that court case. That could be refiled, and it is. And because you did not show responsibility, fiduciary responsibility, and you weren't transparent with the community, you're legally liable, and I'm excited for that, because that means that along with all the corruption scandals that are arising, some of them that have been reported by Elizabeth Alcantara on her taking money and then voting on certain contracts, these are all criminals. I wish I had more to say, more time, but they've been cutting my First Amendment and our time, so I'll have to come back.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council, and congratulations to Mr. LaPlante. I have had the privilege of meeting you previously and you going on our water trips to the state water project or the Colorado River. My name's Leticia Vazquez Wilson, and I am one of eight members on the Central Basin Municipal Water District and have been there for quite some time now. It's been about 10 years. I love being in Downey. I actually attended St. Pius X in Downey, and I want to introduce myself as one of the new representatives. Actually, in January of 2023, the Central Basin Municipal Water District will start its, well, we've already completed our redistricting process, but it kicks in in January of 2023, so I'll be representing a portion of the city of Downey. So I wanted to introduce myself as one of the representatives for Downey on the Central Basin Municipal Water District. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Water Replenishment District, which is a different water agency, is actually issuing millions of dollars of grants for PFAS and PFAS remediation to a number of cities in the Water Replenishment District area. And I have reached out to Director Vera Robles-Douette, who actually represents your city on the Water Replenishment District, and she's indicated that she has also reached out to the general manager and the council members to urge you to apply for that funding. I think it's been well over a year and a half that we did some educational videos that actually resulted in me getting a letter from your former, one of your attorneys, threatening to sue me because I was talking about the PFAS that I guess at that point, you hadn't quite been notified by your employee who represented you on the Central Basin Board about. I think now you've done your notice to the public that the PFAS or PFAS levels in the city of Downey in certain areas are quite high. There are a lot of cities that are actually already either have shut down their water wells and are starting to build their remediation systems and their local water wells. I hope that with the new leadership in Downey, you know, that is a priority. I believe that the citizens of Downey deserve to have clean and affordable water for its residents. And on another note, I do want to mention two more things. I know that a resident was here to talk about an illegal meter charge that Central Basin had imposed, actually through the aggressive leadership of Mr. John O'Sculli, who's your former assistant city manager on our board. I voted against it. I always knew that the meter charge was unlawful, and once it was approved by our board, a number of cities came and sued Central Basin, and that resulted in a settlement, and that meter charge was canceled. There's another charge called the standby charge that those of you that are property owners in the entire Central Basin service area, we pay a tax that was never approved by the voters of the district. And so I believe that it's something that you all should carefully look at and consider advocating on behalf of your city to end the tax over at Central Basin. So thank you very much, and congratulations again, Mr. LaPlante.
Can you tell me where the map is so that I can see who represents what for Downey?
Sure. Our redistricting kicks in in January, and I'll make sure to email all of you all the new, the new maps that will, we've already approved them, but it'll kick in in January.
Thank you.
Also, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
If I may, Ms. Vazquez, I am familiar with the application. At some point, I think Mayor Protema and myself were both inquiring as to whether we were applying for those funds. City manager Levas, have we applied yet? Maybe Ms. Vazquez, as our new representative, and welcome to Downey, can help us secure some money for PFAS remediation.
Sure. Our Public Works Director, Galfino, and his staff through our water utilities have actually been pretty active in securing some funds. We have secured some. We actually have, in this current year's budget, about 16 million. We actually have, in this current year's budget, about $16 million of funding for well. So we are in the process right now.
Did we apply to this specific, what's it called, Representative Vazquez?
The Water Repunishment District, I actually really encourage you to appoint a staff member, maybe in your Public Works Department, to monitor the meetings that apply to water and, you know, water resources. I'd love to share that. The Water Repunishment District has a monthly meeting. It's the Water Resources Committee meeting, and in that committee, they actually have a list of all of the cities that have applied and also the list of cities that they've granted money to. And from what it appears, all of the cities that have applied have been granted money. I haven't seen Downey on the list because Downey hasn't applied, so.
It's a deadline.
So I'll have her, since we can't have a Q and A kind of, I'll just have, we're going to have Delfino, side conversation with, between the two of you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We have been talking to WRD for the last two years. In fact, we are working with a city attorney on an agreement which will be in front of the city council at the next meeting.
Okay. Only because we can't have a Q and A because this isn't an item on the agenda.
Vazquez, could I have your card?
You know what, I didn't.
If you could just leave your information.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Levas and staff, good evening. I have a couple of brief topics tonight. First one has to do with Mr. George Gascon, the county district attorney. Basically, for those who do not support Mr. Gascon's progressive experiment with what's happening, what they need to do, for those that don't support that, they need to stand up and say something about it. One of the ways to do that is that there is a recall petition set up for Mr. Gascon. The website is recallDAgeorgeGascon.com. They need to get roughly 560,000 signatures by July the 6th. So for those who feel that Mr. Gascon's liberal policies do not support the public safety of people, they need to get involved and state their point of view. The second topic is our country. Most of us know the problems our country is existing right now, and we are going on the wrong track. It shows really where ideology overcomes common sense. A lot of these things that we're now have problems with, if somebody, and of course there's nobody there, or very difficult to have people there, to have common sense decisions on how to cope with some of our problems. So again, my point is that those who do not support the present policies of Mr. Biden, they need to stand up and notify their legislators that they do not approve of that, and hopefully something can be done about it in the next election. And finally, finally, Madam Mayor, I have a suggestion for all of us in this room, and that is to surprise somebody, and you surprise someone by telling them that you love them. We need more love in our society today, so take some time and say you love somebody and surprise the heck out of them. That ends my comments. I yield my reminding time back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy. I love you.
Madam Mayor Pacheco, I request 20 additional seconds to speak on non-agenda.
Have you spoken already? You've actually already spoken, sir.
The only question I want to ask you, I want to call upon you to explain to the public.
Sir, please have a seat.
Why members of this council want to dissolve the clergy council.
Second. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to make a comment, I will now entertain a motion to close public comment. Sir, second, so ordered by the mayor. Now is a time for consent calendar items. I would like to make a point of clarification for the resolution title for item number 12. The complete title is Adopt a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey Approving the Purchase of a Permanent Road Easement and the Acquisition of a Temporary Construction Easement Between Raul Lopez and Arlene G. Lopez, Trustees of the Lopez Family Living Trust, dated September 8, 1997, and the City of Downey for Property Located at 10220 Lakewood Boulevard. Also, for item number 16, the complete resolution title is Adopt a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Downey Authorizing Certain City Representatives to Acquire Federal Surplus Property. Are there any council members that would like to remove or abstain from an item?
I need to abstain from item two since I was not a member of the council on April 26th, April 27th, or March 8th.
Thank you. Are there any other members? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, can we please vote?
The consent calendar is approved with Councilmember LaPlante abstaining from item number two, council meeting minutes of April 26, 27, and March 8, and Councilmember Frometta absent.
Thank you. And the last item on our agenda is an administrative report. Approve Employment Agreement for the Position of Interim City Manager and Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the Hiring of a Retired Annuity in Compliance with Government Code Section 21221H. I would like to make a point of clarification regarding the title of the resolution for this item. The correct title is Adopt a Resolution of City Council of the City of Downey Appointing Retired Annuity to a Vacant Position of City Manager Pursuing Government Code Sections 7522.56 and 21221H. City manager Levas, do we have a staff, do we have a staff report?
Madam Mayor, the staff report will be given by James McQueen, our human resources director.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. The item before you this evening is an employment agreement for the position of interim city manager and a resolution authorizing the hiring of a retired annuitant in accordance with CalPERS regulation. Upon announcement of current city manager Levas's retirement, staff reached out to solicit resumes for candidates that were interested in filling the position of interim city manager on interim basis while the city recruits for a permanent replacement. Council then conducted interviews with the top candidates and through this process selected Mark Scott to fill the position of interim city manager with the city. Mr. Scott has over 32 years of experience serving as a city manager in other public agencies and has also served as an interim city manager for two other public agencies. Mr. Scott, in accordance with CalPERS regulation, will be paid the same salary of the current city manager, which equates to $138.28 per hour. Also, in accordance with CalPERS regulations, Mr. Scott will not receive any additional pay or benefits. Sufficient funding for this position is included in the 2022, 2023 budget. This interim position will actually create a cost savings as he will be working limited hours and also receiving less benefits than the current city manager. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my council colleagues? No? Okay. I will now entertain a motion.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Frometta absent.
Thank you. And city manager Levas, do you have any comments?
Just one comment. I know that we occasionally get questions about street improvements and what's going on. There's a lot of street improvements going on in neighborhoods right now, so please be patient with us. They're out there working, doing the work that everybody wanted us to do in those residential streets, and now they're here, and so people are now a little upset because their streets getting torn up. But when it's all said and done, it'll be a very nice street to drive on. The amount of work that's going on, you know, roughly when we're done with this, about 50% of the city's streets will have been done and completed and touched. So that's a huge endeavor, and we're going to be probably through all of that probably a couple of years ahead of schedule. So we're working toward it, and thank you, Delfino, for getting that done. We're certainly proud to see all these things going and moving so quickly. So thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. And thank you all for joining us this evening at our council meeting. I will now adjourn the meeting in memory of the victims of the shooting in Buffalo, New York, the victims of the shooting in Laguna Woods, California, Ryan Dizon Millard, longtime contract permit technician in the Community Development Department's Building and Safety Division, the victims of today's elementary school shooting in Uvalde.
Uvalde.
Uvalde. Uvalde, Texas, and the victims of the Ukraine crisis and the lives lost due to COVID-19. A moment of silence. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.